In 2016, we began the process of bringing The Shine back to South Park with the installation of a new synthetic soccer field right behind us. South Park continues to be unsafe. What good is investing more than $10 million in this park if it's too dangerous for our children, our families, or our seniors? We're about to change that perception. I'm elated to say that on this day, we officially launched the Community Safety Partnership Program.
I just want to thank the community for allowing us to partner and build bridges.
This is relationship-based policing. So it's being a part of the community and working together. Pretty much the future of policing. Ultimately, we all might come from a different background or whatnot, but inside, we're the same heart and the same people.
I know that all of us here share the same vision for this park, and that is to make it a safe place where our families can build memories, our children can run freely, and the community gather during the day or night.
Growing up in South LA, I've always heard, you know, hey, this is just the way things are down here. And I hate that. And I don't want that anymore.
Our whole vision is taking it back. This is our part. This is, we want the community members, the kids, to feel safe here. We're excited to see the change here.
The annual L.A. River Cleanup is one of the biggest and most community-forward events of the year. Hundreds of volunteers help remove and collect trash from one of our most precious resources.
We're here to provide entertainment for friends of the Los Angeles River and all the volunteers who are here cleaning up.
What are you doing here today?
L.A. River Cleanup.
For much of my upbringing, we didn't think of this so much as a river anymore. We thought of it as the wash. We thought of it as a place where you would go down and maybe goof off, but we didn't think of that as a living, breathing river. Well, Los Angeles is committed to bringing this river back.
Over the past 30 years, we have mobilized over 70,000 volunteers just like you to remove over 400 tons of trash from this impaired but precious waterway. This is trash that would otherwise end up in the Pacific Ocean, so you are all here making true environmental impact today.
It's amazing, the stuff that I've heard of, that people find buried. This is my weirdest object yet, a paint roller. I dug out a bicycle. I found this acrylic sweater almost all buried. I pulled it out. I noticed it didn't have one single stain or one single hole. I took it home, I washed it, I dried it out with a tweezer. I pulled out every little twig and root that had been growing in it, and it ended up being a perfect, beautiful, wearable sweater. I still have it. I call it my river sweater.
I feel encouraged by how many people are out here to pick up the trash. I was so shocked when I came and there was like a long line to check in. That was awesome, because I was like, oh, man. Like, you know, it's so easy to get discouraged by seeing all the trash, just in L.A. in general, you know? Like, it's constantly very dirty. And then to see so many people have hope and take action towards change is the best part.
I wanted to come here.
Why?
Because I want to help my community make it a better community.
One person may feel that they can't make a huge impact on our environment, but when you see so many people, each of whom individually made that decision to come together, you see the massive impact that we can all make together.
The fact that we still have the core values of humanity, like, community, that's the best.
Thank you all for being here. Thank you for the care that you give. But just remember, today is just a day that we act on it. For the rest of the 364 days, we think about it and figure out how to pay our homage.
I would not miss this opportunity. I'm an L.A. native. We only have one river. So for me to be able to do this takes, every time I do it, I'm that much closer to my dream of having a whole river back to normal, natural bottom like this, stuff growing in it, maybe being able to take, you know, canoe rides on it, a real river again.
Thank you for doing this for the city.
You're welcome.
Oftentimes, parents are just too busy or can't afford to take their kids to the museum. Gil Reyes reports on a no-cost option that recently made a stop in South Park and South
I think it's pretty nice, and it has a lot of cool stuff they get to learn about.
South Park resident Aleah Benjamin and her cousins do something they rarely get to experience: go to a museum.
Because our parents don't want to take us like that. Sometimes they know, they may be tired.
Whatever the reason, the Natural History Museum and Exposition Park has them covered. Their mini-mobile museum stops by the neighborhood. It's a 50-foot-long trailer where kids can learn about Southern California plants and wildlife for free.
It's a space designed to look like you're outside in the Santa Monica Mountains. We've been serving schools in Los Angeles Unified and in other districts since 1992 with this truck specifically, and we actually have others as well.
South L.A. Councilman Curran Price calls it "a sad fact" that many inner-city kids just don't make it out to museums very often. So the idea here is, why not bring the museums to the kids? In this case, the local park and recreation center.
South Park Recreation Center on 51st and San Pedro hosted the Traveling Museum. Also, this mini-installation from the California Science Center. Representatives from the Always Free, Broad, and California African-American museums also stopped by to encourage more South L.A. families to visit.
It's true, many don't. And it's just miles and minutes away. But they don't have the experience, don't have the interest, don't have the desire, don't have the means sometimes to get to the museum. And so we want to make sure that kids know that the museum is here for them and that they should take advantage of it.
Councilman Price says the Traveling Museum will return to South L.A. somewhere down the road. And a bookworm for your school at no cost? Visit the Natural History Museum's website at nhm.org. While the city of L.A. is working on long-term solutions to our homeless crisis, others in the community are coming up with immediate solutions to help those living on the streets.
Well, they say that on any given night, there's over 50,000 people that are experiencing homelessness. You know, people sleeping on the streets, you know, people just kind of like looking lost and not where to go. That's why neighborhood councils, you know, they love to get involved, they love to help. And this is one great way that, you know, they can take resources back into their community.
Well, Los Angeles is the homeless capital of the U.S. We have about 60,000 people in the county that don't have a safe place to sleep at night, and it's unacceptable.
Typically, people falling into homelessness for the first time are losing their housing, but they still have their car. And where are they going to park safely and legally in the city of L.A. every night? So that's what we do.
So we get a lot of, you know, blocking the sidewalk, open bottle containers, jaywalking tickets. You know, a lot of times, they get their driver's licenses suspended or they have bad credit, and that helps, that's a barrier to housing. And so removing all that really helps.
So the situation right now is so horrific, right? We already have people camping on the streets. It's not sanitary, it's not safe, and it's a public health hazard. So why don't we just do it in a more dignified way? And that's what Cardboard Gummy represents.
I have a home right now, but I would like to know some information, because I have people, friends, all over in L.A. that they are homeless, and I want to see if I can help them.
And most of the people we see are people we knew when they were housed. People in Milwaukee are not becoming homeless and say, "I'm going to go to L.A." People in L.A. who are homeless started out in L.A. So we're basically just helping our neighbors and helping our neighbors navigate the system.
We don't have enough shelters. We can't build them fast enough. So that's why this is an immediate intervention that people need to support, and we need to really do this.
From helping those experiencing homelessness to helping our veterans, many don't know where to find the help they need, but a recent resource fair offered a one-stop shop for
The event is called Stand Down by military terms. Basically, what it is, is that resource event where we're hoping more veterans will show up, and they will find out there's job training, job reentry, mental health, home loans, all kinds of stuff that the veteran or the current military member can qualify for.
Art is a part of the Children and Family Wellness Working Group, and he really had this idea of creating a resource fair, which is a stand-down, and really connecting families and veterans and services all throughout northeast L.A. And I thought that was a really great idea, because I do see a lot of veterans in northeast L.A. I'm also local, and I don't see a lot of events for veterans. So I really just wanted to take part in that and help support and connect veterans with all the services that they have in greater Los Angeles.
Sometimes you have to make adjustments of getting yourself in good health, mental health, and taking care of the issues that are preventing you to be successful. It's there, if you want it.
Spring has sprung, and folks in Silmar celebrated the occasion with, what else? An egg hunt, of course, with a little health fair mixed in.
So today at Silmar Rec Center, we have our annual egg hunt. This year, we are incorporating a health and safety fair to provide valuable information and resources to our community. We have various arts and crafts, games, different booths that have information. We will be having our actual egg hunt for all children ages 0 to 12 years old.
Having this event here definitely brings a lot of awareness to the programming classes that we do offer here on a year-round basis. So our main focus is, you know, to keep the families together, bring them out for a special time. That way, everyone can have fun.
Over at Exposition Park, folks enjoy their own spring festival, which features family fun, including rides, live music, balloon-making, and lots of roses.
Expos Center holds an annual spring festival, so we thought it'd be great this year to host it in the Exposition Park Rose Garden. I mean, we have over 60,000 different types of roses. This is a very historic garden, and it's operated and owned by the City of Los Angeles Department of Recreation and Parks. And so we thought it'd be great for folks to come in and smell the roses and just have a lot of fun.
Besides your presentation, what was the highlight of the day?
Being able to take pictures here by the fountain and enjoy the flowers, be here as a group. It's our first time being here as a whole group and taking these lovely pictures.
My first years, I never been here, and the roses were the roses, but this event is beautiful for the family and entertainment. For the kids, it's fun. I love it.
In Lincoln Heights, a brand-new playground is brightening the neighborhood and encouraging outdoor play.
I started in the department 30 years ago. In 1990, this was my second assignment. So this is very special to me, and this community will always be special to me.
We hosted a community meeting here, and the community was very excited about this new playground.
You know, as a five-years-old, they love parks. They need to be outside. And there's not that many around in this block, so.
To be able to dedicate this wonderful structure, the shade, the kids do not have to be in the sun, they can play all day.
The community of Lincoln Heights said, "You know what? We want this playground to be interactive, we want it to be quality, and we want it to be accessible for children in this community that we know are living with disabilities."
Look here, what you've done. From a dusty little place that nobody cared to play, it has turned into a beautiful, beautiful treasure. And so to see these young kids now play, I feel like being a little kid. I wish I could be their age, I can enjoy this beautiful park. This park serves as a social recreational fixture in the community, and we're happy to support many adventures and friendships that will be made here.
My son is five, so he's very excited. We've been waiting for quite some time.
The LAPD Museum puts on a carnival for the community. A new furry member joins the L.A. Zoo family, and Westwood gets a new stop sign. All this in City Beat.
LAPD's Northeast Division recently held a community carnival in Glaciel Park. Proceeds benefited the LAPD Museum. Both kids and families enjoyed rides, games, and naturally yummy funnel cake. The L.A. Zoo recently added a member to its family with the birth of a new female zebra foal. The first such birth since 1988, the zoo welcomes visitors to come say hello to the cute new baby girl. And 5th District Councilmember Paul Corretts recently welcomed a new stop sign to the intersection of Kelton and Massachusetts in Westwood. A recent surge in traffic has led to a surge in accidents, and the new signage will help to curtail that.
They don't have to watch for somebody plowing through at 60 miles an hour. Now there will be much greater safety.
The ribbon is cut, and it's time to play hoops. L.A.'s all-girl Sacred Heart High School celebrates a brand-new gymnasium.
This gym has been in the making for 20, 25, 30 years, and it's a huge achievement for us. We were one of the only Catholic all-girls school in the archdiocese without a gym.
I was a student athlete, so having to practice at Lincoln Park and having to have our games there was difficult, just because we wouldn't get a lot of support, because it was off-campus. So the fact that it's on-campus now, the girls will be able to have support from their fellow comments.
We believe that young girls and young women deserve that same opportunity as young boys and men, and so we're just happy that now we have this over here on the east side of the city.
We cannot wait to make new memories in our brand-new gymnasium.
Coming to Sacred Heart without a gym was still a great experience, but having a gym is just an extra wow.
Sacred Heart is a place where our teachers, staff, and coaches encourage us to be the best versions of ourselves possible.
Thank you to everyone who helped this dream of ours come true.
Enjoy free pancakes during a pop-up art show, raise awareness on homelessness while listening to stories from those living on the streets, and enjoy the cultural diversity of a Southeast European Film Festival. All this and Things to Do.
Don't miss the return of the Los Angeles Pancakes &amp; Booze Art Show. This underground pop-up art show celebrates 10 years of serving free pancakes and introducing SoCal residents to some of the nation's leading emerging artists. This two-day event will include body painting, live DJs, and more. It's all happening at the Los Angeles Pancakes &amp; Booze Art Show, May 3rd and 4th, beginning at 8:00 p.m. The show is set to take over Lot 613, located at 613 Imperial Street. For more details, check out their listing on Eventbrite.com. Homeward L.A. is gearing up to take over L.A. Performance Spaces. This traveling theater company will put up a series of productions featuring monologues based on stories from people who have experienced homelessness. Funds raised from the event will go to the Midnight Mission. So do your part to support homelessness awareness and the arts by attending Homeward L.A. Production begins April 26 and runs through May 5. For performance times and venues, visit homewardla.org. Travel halfway around the globe without leaving your hometown. The 14th Annual Southeast European Film Festival can take you there. This film festival showcases the cultural diversity of Southeast Europe and fosters cultural exchange through its annual presentations of films from that region. Sneak a peek at how the other half lives at the Southeast European Film Festival, happening May 1 through the 8. For a complete listing of festival programs and venues, visit sefestla.org. And that's a look at some things to do.
That's it for this edition. I'm Wemayma Rashid. From all of us here at L.A. This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. We're also on Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube. See you next week for more L.A.
Good morning, good morning, good morning. If everyone would please find a seat. Shhh. Everyone would please find a seat. I want to welcome you to City Hall. Today is Tuesday, April 30th. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday. The public is welcome. Madam Clerk, we have a quorum. Would you please call a roll?
Blumentfeld, Bonham Buscainos, Sadio Harris-Dawson, Weezer Karats, Krakorin Martinez, Ofero Price, Rodriguez, Rue Smith, Wesson. Ten members present and a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Ofero moves. Ms. Rodriguez seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Sadio moves, and Ms. Martinez seconds. That brings us where?
Mr. President, today is Tuesday, and time for the flag salute.
If I could ask everyone to please rise. Mr. Ofero, would you lead us today?
Eyes and please place your hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Ofero, before we move forward, it's my understanding you have an introduction. Why don't we do that now?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, I have a very, very special introduction. My friend, Hidab Tarifi of the Islamic Center of Southern California, has brought a very special delegation into council chambers this morning because April is Arab-American Heritage Month in the city of Los Angeles. Now, we, the city of Los Angeles, is one of 102 cities in 26 states that have issued proclamations celebrating Arab-American Heritage Month in the United States. There are an estimated 3 million Arab-Americans living across the country, and according to the Arab-American Institute, countries of origin for Arab-Americans include Algeria, Bahrain, the tiny island nation of Comoros, Djibouti, Egypt, Iraq, Jordan, Kuwait, Lebanon, Libya, Mauritania, Morocco, Oman, Qatar, Palestine, Saudi Arabia, Somalia, Sudan, Syria, Tunisia, and the United Arab Emirates, and Yemen. Now, there are a lot of stereotypes about Arab-Americans that are unfortunate for the most part, and in Los Angeles, we don't believe in honoring stereotypes. We believe in breaking through them and making sure they disintegrate. Two-thirds of Arab-Americans are Christians, while just 25% are Muslim. In 2014, the city council passed a resolution which established August as Muslim Heritage Month, and the California State Assembly followed suit in August of 2016. This city celebrates an annual day of religious pluralism to lift up the work done by communities to weave an inclusive social fabric in our multi-faith world, and never has it been more important to highlight the great works and how special celebrating multiculturalism is, and how critical it is in these dangerous times that we live in when those who have hatred in their hearts often will hide behind a religion to express and act on that hatred. Well, that's what we all resist here in the city of Los Angeles, and I couldn't be more proud to stand with Hidab and some in the delegation, including Hala Alfie, Aziza Hassan, Jumana from the mayor's office, Jumana Silyan Saba. We have Ambassador Lamia Meckhmar, Council General of Egypt, who is either here or on his way, Dima Atway, and Dr. Aida, Mohammed Kaiti, and Wafa Tarifi, Kenan Kapatonovic, Kristin Stongas, Nasser Karam, and also expected today to visit City Hall Ambassador Faisal Alhuli, Council General of Kuwait, and then lastly, Samar Dalati Ghanoum. We thank you, we honor you, and we celebrate Arab-American heritage in the city of Los Angeles.
All right, let's go through the agenda.
Mr. President, there is a request to continue Item 7 and 1C to Friday, May 3rd, and Item 1G to May 29th.
Okay, so ordered. Continue.
Items 1 through 9 are items noticed for public hearing. There are cards on all nine items.
Okay, let's hold those and move on to the next set of items.
Items 10 through 44 are items for which public hearings have been held. Motions are required for Item 14 and 44. Would you like to hold those two items on the desk?
Let's hold those two items, and let's deal with the remaining items. Mr. Weezer?
Item 14 special, please.
14? Okay, let's prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll. And then I'm also told, Madam Clerk, we should hold 43 as well? We'll vote now on the remaining items. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
Okay, next section.
Items 45 through 54 are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay. Without objection, those items are before this body. Do you have cards?
Yes, Mr. President, there are cards on all items.
Okay, then let's move on to the supplemental.
On the supplemental agenda, Items 55 and 56 are items which public hearings have been held.
Okay, Mr. Smith?
Yes, I'd like to ask, the number 42, will you reconsider so it can be discussed? I need to vote on 42.
Okay, so let's quickly vote on reconsideration for item, what was that, 40?
42.
42? Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
Okay, we'll hold that item, and now, yes, Mr. Buscainos?
24th with, please, on 20.
24th with.
Thank you.
And now let's move on to Items 55 and 56. Let's prepare to vote on these items. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
Thank you. That brings us where, Madam Clerk?
Mr. President, that takes council back to presentations. Items called special or general public comment.
Okay, so what I like to do is see if I can get Ms. Martinez at this time. Okay, thank you, Madam President and members. I have a very special presentation today, and I'd like to ask my dear friend and his colleagues, why don't you come up and stand around? To the people that are with us today in the chambers and to my colleagues, it is my honor to present to you someone that has spent almost four decades covering people, places, and politics in the great state of California. Let's give a round of applause to Dave Bryan from CBS and Channel 8. Not only is he just an all-around good human being, he is the one reporter that I can see eye to eye. So it's my honor to have him here today. You know, I've got some notes here because I want to properly identify some of the stations that he's worked for, but I really don't need notes to talk about a guy that I've known for a very long time. In fact, my relationship goes back prior to him interviewing me, interviewing my bosses is when it started. He graduated from the University of Maryland, and his first gig was at a radio station in Washington, DC. Well, he did a good job there. He worked there, I think, from 1970 till about 1976, and then he got his first television gig with a station in Baltimore affiliated with ABC. At that station, he was their investigative reporter, and he worked with somebody that many of you may have heard of, who was the news anchor that he stood beside, and this person's name was Oprah Winfrey. All right, so that, he did work with her. In fact, he takes credit for her success. In the early 80s, he moved to California, not sunny California, he moved to foggy California in San Francisco, and he worked for a CBS station there where he covered local and state politics. He also traveled to China for the Tiananmen Square protest. He worked in that area for several years, and then he did finally get to Southern California around 1990, and he was brought down here by Fox News. In fact, if I remember correctly, one of his first assignments was to cover the Civil War and the famine in Somalia. From there, we know him as an individual who has covered school boards and city halls and county government and state government and the federal government as well. So in March of 2003, Dave was embedded with a Marine battalion that, and he was in the Iraq War in its early stages, and he traveled with them through the deserts of Kuwait to Baghdad. After that, in 2005, he covered the Hurricane Katrina in New Orleans, and he did it with style, and he did it with class. He was not tied to a telephone pole so we could see just how windy it was. He really let us know the devastation and the pain that the people were feeling then. Many of you might remember when we had a new governor who was an action hero, who had saved the world probably more times than any governor in the United States of America. The two of them got into it over a controversial issue, and Dave was trying to get an interview, and the governor tried to bully him, but Dave did a spin move on him, still got the mic, got the mic in his face, and got the interview that he needed. Dave was also the moderator at one of the last mayor-oral debates that our then-councilman Garcetti was involved in, and he was also involved in a big situation with the school board district at Sentinel Valley. And the final few years of Dave's career, he's had the opportunity to cover President Trump, which has been the gift that keeps on giving. And I'll say to Mr. Sadio, when Mr. Sadio and I were talking about creating an immigrant advocate for the city of L.A. and creating a commission on immigration and civil rights, it was Dave who was the first reporter that laid out that story. You know, it's kind of fitting that when Dave first came here in 1982, it was when Governor Brown was ending his last term as governor. And here we are nearly 40 years later, and Governor Brown just ended his last term as governor. Dave has been a class act and an individual that I don't know of any elected official that has ever avoided having an interview with him because you know that has ever avoided having an interview with him because you know Dave has always been into reporting the news, not creating or making the news. He's been an individual that young people could look up to, and if they want to get into this industry, I can't think of a better role model to have. He is getting ready to move into a new chapter in his life, and we wanted to bring you here today, Dave, because we all wish you well. We are all going to miss you, and we appreciate the professionalism that you have shown. Now, a lot of us don't know a lot about Dave on a personal basis, but I have found out just a few things. He really enjoys sailing on other people's boats because he doesn't like to do the work. And also I found out that he is a great horse racing handicap and has a sure-fire system that I hope you share, at least with me. And then I also found out that one of the things that he's going to do in the next phase of his life is he wants to become a drummer for a band, so he's taking drumming lessons. And I want you to know, Dave, that Mr. Buscaino here, he is the lead singer for the Los Angeles City Council, so once you get your drumming together, then he can be the face of your band. But ladies and gentlemen, we work with the media all the time. And yes, there are sometimes good days, bad days, good stories and bad stories, but we all work together, we all have a relationship, and we all wish each other well. Dave, I am sure that your next chapter will be as exciting as the past forty years and as exciting as whatever the hell that is that's buzzing. And in the back, as soon as I mentioned you becoming a drummer, that's when the buzzing came up. But I also wanted to indicate that we have the VP of News, Tara Finestone, with us today from KBS, give her, CBS, give her a round of applause. We have our friends, Pat Harvey here and Jeff Michael, who approached me and told me that you were going to be moving on. We have Susie Su. We have David Goldstein with us today, and today he doesn't even have a hidden camera. And we have, somebody said that we know of, so don't say anything to him. And we also have Dave Lopez here. Give them all a round of applause. They all represent the faces of Los Angeles like, just as we do. So with that said, Madam President, I'd like to open it up to the rest of the members.
Buscaino?
The lead singer of the council.
Sure. I'm not going to sing. I don't want to lose an audience here. But, Mr. President, thank you so much for bringing a legendary political broadcaster here before us in the city of Los Angeles. I had the distinct pleasure to, the night that I was elected in San Pedro, my first interview was with Dave Bryan. And a little bit nervous, keep in mind, I prefer to have a Dave Bryan interview rather than a Dave Goldstein interview. Dave, you, and I was telling Pat earlier, you're truly going to be missed in this city. When we talk about fair political reporting, we don't see that nowadays, especially when you turn to cable news network and whether it's CNN or Fox, people are screaming over politics. But it was refreshing to watch you, over the last seven years of I've served as a council member, to cover political stories facing our city, our state, and our country. You will truly be missed. To the management at KCAL and CBS, good luck on finding a replacement. It's definitely going to be tough. And if you look at folks who are surrounding you, Dave, your team, your family, who have embraced you and have supported you over the years, you're surrounded by a community of love and a community of support, and we're going to truly miss your reporting here in the city of Los Angeles. And good luck sailing. There's a great Cabirlo Beach Marina down at San Pedro. Hope to see you there soon. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Gakkorian?
Oh, okay, I was just waiting for my cue here. You know, the fifteen-minute members that sit around this horseshoe, we know our lives are crazy. We don't have normal calendars. We have weird schedules. We work seven days a week. We work from sunup to sunup sometimes. And it's the same with our people from the media. So in a way, we're kind of bonded. We see each other in all kinds of places at all different times of the day. And I do want to say that, on a personal note, Dave, I will miss you as well. Again, you were a class act, and I don't think that I have ever, I've always looked forward to having an interview with you. So on behalf of the entire City Council, I would like to present you with a resolution from all of us. Dave, today is your day. Let's give Dave Bryan a round of applause. And let's have him say a few words. Dave, that resolution is taller than you and I.
Herb, thank you so much, and thanks to the council. I'm honored and humbled by it. You know, I love to talk. Anyone who's seen my very long reports knows sometimes I talk way too much, but I hate talking about myself. I want to talk about you guys and about, you know, important stories, but this is a little painful for me, although I'm extremely grateful. I just mean it in a sort of a funny, personal way. So I first, like I said, I want to thank all of you because this is really a great honor for me, and I feel very humbled to have received it. And all of my friends and colleagues, my neighbors, my sailing buddy, they're all here, and that really means a lot to me as well. It's been a hell of a ride, I got to tell you. And it started at the radio station that Herb mentioned in Arlington, Virginia, right outside of Washington. I was so nervous, Herb, though. I didn't really last six years. I lasted maybe six days. Because what happened was, I was so nervous that I couldn't breathe properly, so I was kind of talking like this. And the owner of the station called me, well, in the middle of, you know, my workday, six days in, and said, "My friend, you sound like you haven't reached puberty, and so we're going to have to let you go."
Wow.
So, like I say, I lasted just a few days, but you know what? At least it was a start, and I was able to use that to then get work at, you know, smaller stations and learn, you know, learn what I was really doing here. And in the meantime, you know, as Herb mentioned, I had stops in Beijing during Tiananmen Square, in Somalia when the Marines came in for famine relief, and in the Iraq War. So it's just been an amazing forty-some years, and it's time for me to ride off into the sunset. I have to say, though, that Dave Goldstein said he did have a few questions, so I'm sure, I don't know that he wants to come up and ask them publicly, but you know how David is, so.
Yes.
But again, I just really, from my heart, thank you so much. I greatly appreciate it and having everyone here. It means everything to me, and thank you, thank you, thank you so much.
Let's give it up for Dave Bryan.
Members, just go ahead and bring up item thirty-four for reconsideration. We're only going to vote on reconsideration, then we're going to go ahead and leave that item on the table. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk, let's go ahead and vote on two items, items forty-two and forty-three.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. I need to recuse myself on this for investments I own in those companies. Thank you.
Very well, thank you very much. Those items are now before us. Let's go ahead and open the roll. Can you please remove Mr. Smith off the board, Madam Clerk? He's stepping out of the room. Okay, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Very well. Mr. Gakkorian?
I'd like to ask that items fifty-five and fifty-six be sent forth with, please.
Very well, those items will be sent forth with. On behalf of Mr. Gakkorian. Mr. Bonin?
Thank you, Madam President. We'd been holding item forty-four A on the desk. It's a lien issue. I'd like to ask that we receive and file it as much as the building is owner-occupied.
Okay, very well. Without objection, that will be the order. Mr. Harris-Dawson? Oh, we need to vote on your item, Mr. Bonin. Hold on for just a second, Mr. Harris-Dawson. Let's go ahead and vote on item forty-four A. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Mr. Harris-Dawson?
Request for item number nineteen to go forth with.
Okay, item nineteen forth with for Mr. Harris-Dawson. Mr. Gakkorian, are you ready for your presentation, sir?
Madam President and members, as we do every April, we pause today to mourn an almost unimaginable loss, to honor and celebrate those who survived, and the generosity of this state in saving them, and to reflect on the lessons of injustice and impunity and what it continues to mean to all of us today. From nineteen fifteen to nineteen twenty-three, the Armenian people were tortured, starved, killed, and forced into exile by the hundreds of thousands. One and a half million men, women, and children were killed, and hundreds of thousands more were displaced. Through the deliberate and carefully planned massacres and systematic deportation, the Armenian people were violently uprooted from their historic homeland of three millennia. An ancient culture that had enriched the world long before Julius Caesar was born was eliminated from its historic lands. Churches that were already centuries old when Columbus set sail were desecrated and destroyed. The brutal campaign of extermination would be the first genocide of modern times, but as we came to know, it would not be the last. Armenians suffered the unimaginable pain of losing children, parents, brothers, sisters, friends, in unfathomable numbers. But we know that the entire world suffered loss as well, as we always do when genocide occurs. We suffered the loss of the unfulfilled potential of those who might have inspired us through their art, who might have altered our view of the world through science, who might have saved countless lives through medical discoveries, but who instead breathed their final breath in the burning deserts of Syria. The Armenian Highlands had been a center of music and culture for centuries, throughout the Middle Ages and into modern times. Komitas Vartabed was a priest who documented the traditional music of the Armenian people, who was one of the first students of ethnic music in the world, who applied academic review to preserving that music. And Komitas Vartabed was one of those Armenians who, on April twenty-fourth, nineteen fifteen, was arrested and imprisoned, and although he survived the immediate genocide, he was a broken man who eventually died, a death of pain and dejection, and was a martyr of the Armenian genocide. But his legacy survives, and we have to And we have to think, as we reflect on the million and a half people who died, not just of those statistics, but we also have to think which of those would have been another Sayatnov or another Adam Kachaturian, or another Arno Babajanian, or another Alan Hovanes, or another Charles Aznavour? Which of them would have enlightened and inspired and moved the world? William Saroyan, most notably, said about the genocide, "I should like to see any power of the world destroy this race, this small tribe of unimportant people whose wars have all been fought and lost, whose structures have crumbled, literature is unread, music is unheard, and prayers are no more answered. Go ahead, destroy Armenia. See if you can do it. Send them into the desert without bread or water, burn their homes and churches. Then, see if they will not laugh, sing, and pray again. For when two of them meet anywhere in the world, see if they will not create a new Armenia." Well, members, the city of Los Angeles has been one of those places that proved Saroyan right, and proved that the Armenian genocide failed. The diverse diaspora of Los Angeles has kept the unique traditions and cultures of the Armenian people alive through music, the arts, dance, food, and so much more. So this year, I'm especially proud to recognize an incredible group of honorees, whose contributions have been at the forefront of preserving the cultural heritage and identity of the Armenian people, especially through music and dance. Thanks to our honorees, Armenian music is not unheard, and the Armenian people do laugh and sing again. So I'm delighted and honored to introduce to you first the incredible musicians that you just heard perform, who make up the heart of the Element Band, which is known widely throughout Southern California and our country. Element Band's unique signature embodies the essence of world music. The band's distinctive arrangements preserve and popularize traditional Armenian songs, and their original compositions resonate deeply with listeners' yearnings for nostalgia or perhaps the Old World through modern tones. Element Band has achieved its aim to bring an innovative edge to musical traditions while contemporaneously performing compositions with eloquent arrangements and instrumentation. Under the direction of Ara Dabanjan, Element Band has made a huge impact on the world music scene with a poignant collection of songs that are moving for modern audiences while still paying homage to the rich traditions of Armenian folk and religious music. Dabanjan's trademark arrangements and instrumentations, paired with Soseh Aramuni's hypnotic and angelic vocals, create a rare chemistry that makes Element Band's performances unparalleled. Band members maintain the integrity of traditional songs, often by performing with indigenous instruments. But in addition to Ara and Soseh, Element Band's musical ensemble includes vocalist Natalie Avunjan, Shant Masarejyan on violin, Aragaz Abramyan on guitar, Armin Manavasyan, the band's contrabassist, and Vinnie Mezian on drums and percussion. The band is also rounded out by gifted musical guests, who include Artiom Manukyan on cello, Mas Agasemi, also on cello, and Vahan Biznuni on piano. So they really have mastered the ability to merge the old, the traditional, the modern, and the new. Element Band's global soundscape has led them to grace the stages of some of the finest venues around the globe, including Los Angeles' favorites like the Hollywood Bowl, Nokia Theater, the Kodak Theater, the Ford Amphitheater, Starlight Bowl, and the Skirball Cultural Center. The band's unique style unites three generations of fans, from the children of genocide survivors to young people growing up here in Los Angeles. And the band serves a distinct role in preserving and popularizing Armenian musical tradition. So it's a great pleasure for me to be able to recognize Ara and Soseh and Element Band for their great contributions to preserving these Armenian traditions and inspiring a new generation of fans. Ara? Thirty years ago, Maestro Vace Barsumyan invited together a group of Armenian-American musicians, teachers, and community leaders who were interested in fusing the community with high-caliber artistic programs. This group of visionary set out to create a cultural space whose mission was to serve as the musical center of gravity for the Armenian community in Los Angeles. At Lark Musical Society, music is studied, researched, created, published, felt, and performed by young and old, by students and teachers, by beginners, and by professionals. Lark instills the beauty of Armenian heritage, history, and culture in the hearts and minds of our next generation, and ensures that our collective voice will reverberate in the diaspora for years to come. Lark Musical Society is an ambassador for the classical music and cultural heritage of the Armenian community. Through decades of service to the Los Angeles community, Lark has enrolled hundreds of students annually, with ages ranging from five to twenty years old, including not only the children of Armenian descent, but also children of non-Armenian descent who just want to learn more about a different culture. They've organized more than three hundred performances featuring the works of Gomitas, Sayatnov, Chukadjan, Mansurian, Kachaturian, and many other Armenian masters. To keep Armenian musical traditions alive in the Armenian diaspora and to share it with the rest of our community, Lark has fostered research, analysis, and historical inquiry into Armenian music for the enlightenment of scholars as well as laypersons, published more than thirty scholarly treatises and anthologies, including the translation of the complete writings of Gomitas, presented musical programs of the very highest quality for the enrichment of the Los Angeles community at large, and instilled the love of Armenian music among youth, shaping a new generation of accomplished Armenian musicians and music lovers who will carry those ancient traditions forward into the future as well. So it's a great pleasure for me to be able to recognize the Lark Musical Society, and to thank them on behalf of the City Council for their incredible cultural contributions to the city of Los Angeles. And I'd like to present this certificate to Maestro Vace Barsumyan.
Mr. Kakharian, could I recognize Mr. Kerets?
I'm not done yet, sir.
Okay. I just wanted instructions from you.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to recognize the Takan Cultural Association, which was established in Beirut, Lebanon in nineteen forty-seven, and was named in honor of the prolific Armenian writer Vahan Takan. For over seventy years now, the Takan Cultural Association has worked tirelessly to preserve the Armenian culture in centers of the diaspora throughout the world, preserving culture, identity by sponsoring and establishing newspapers, publications, academic institutions, theater groups, and providing classes, again, for the education of young people in music and dance throughout the diaspora and in the homeland. Takan has been a cultural bridge for the Armenian diaspora, connecting communities throughout the world with one another and with Armenia. The Takan Metro Los Angeles Chapter, which was just founded last year to add to Takan's presence here in Southern California, is the newest Takan chapter in the world, the third in the greater Los Angeles region, and has already made an impact by providing tremendous cultural programming to the people of Southern California. So it is a great honor for me to be able to recognize for its work in preserving the Armenian heritage, and particularly through music and performance, the Takan Cultural Association. And I'd like to present this certificate to Shonor Hovzepian. And finally, Mr. President, our final honoree has given so much to our community and to families throughout Southern California. The Hamaskayin Cultural Association has really been an important part of education, of preserving tradition, and of uplifting the Armenian people and others throughout Southern California. At a time when there was significant political and cultural upheavals in the history of the Armenian people and the aftermath of the genocide, a group of nine intellectuals gathered together to found the Hamaskayin Publishing and Cultural Association in Cairo in nineteen twenty-eight. Since then, Hamaskayin has aimed to bestow the young generation with Armenian education and preserve the national identity and cultural traditions in a people who are living outside their homeland, and so it's often very difficult to maintain those traditions and identity. Chapters of Hamaskayin have been created in all of the communities of the Armenian diaspora in Europe, the United States, Canada, South America, and Australia. In California, under the sponsorship of the Western USA Executive Chapter with eight chapters and special committees throughout the state, Hamaskayin has been a source of great pride for the Armenian community. The activities of the chapters of Southern California are diverse. They include lectures, seminars, after-school workshops, commemorative events, exhibitions, concerts, recitals, traditional dance ensembles, and classes. Dramatic arts troupes and choirs, which are just a few of the things that keep the Hamaskayin chapters of California busy, all with one common objective: the preservation of the Armenian intellectual legacy and the promotion of cultural values. Hamaskayin has enriched Southern California through the preservation of classical, folk, and popular music, performances of traditional and ethnic dances in authentic costumes, promotion of theatrical arts, presentations on social conventions and traditions throughout the centuries, as well as encouragement and support to young, talented artists. And so, Mr. President, it's a pleasure for me to recognize and to thank the Hamaskayin Cultural Association and present this certificate to Knar Cortoshan. All right, Mr. President, now I turn it to you.
Okay, thank you. Let's give him one more round of applause. Mr. Paul Kerets.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I thank my good colleague and friend, Paul Kakharian, for bringing this presentation to City Hall. I've always felt a closeness to the Armenian people, partly because we share something that we would rather not share, which is a history of both having had our peoples the targets of the worst genocides in human history. The big difference between the two is that there hasn't been an effort at denial that was taken seriously about the Holocaust, but the perpetrators continue to deny over a hundred years past. I first became aware of the Armenian genocide forty years ago, when I took a class at UCLA that taught me about it, that taught all the details, and then at the end said, "But it didn't happen. It's all a fiction." And I was outraged, and I've been active in support of recognition of the Armenian genocide ever since. I'm also proud that my district is one of the hubs of Armenian survival in Los Angeles, with a church and a school, and a slow effort that will eventually take place to create an Armenian cultural center at the site of a closed fire station. I'm very proud of that and support the community. We also have one other thing in common, unfortunately, is that we've been the targets of hate crimes, both here at synagogues and Jewish populations in Los Angeles, but one that was highly offensive, where someone, I believe still unknown, hung Turkish flags outside of an Armenian school as a way to say, "We did this." And in a way, they were recognizing it, but in the most terrible of ways. And we will continue to fight, and the council will continue to support the effort to recognize the Armenian genocide until it finally happens, and what has to be done is done. So I thank you for bringing this recognition to City Council, and we support the Armenian people and their efforts.
Ms. Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. Kakharian, for bringing in this very important presentation and commemoration. I was proud to join you in support of the resolution to finally have this tragedy acknowledged, because it's so important that we recognize and understand the kind of devastating acts against humanity that took place. And there's 1.5 million reasons why for us to continue in solidarity in fight of this recognition. So I want to thank you for honoring these wonderfully talented individuals who continue to preserve the legacy and the history that is so important that they had attempted to stop, but because of so many of you and your artistic talents and your history-telling, is able to preserve this incredible and important history that contributes to the fabric of our country. So thank you so much. I am proud to be here in solidarity with you to continue that fight and that effort to assure that we get the recognition of the Armenian genocide in this country. Thank you.
Mr. Harris-Dawson.
Mr. Chair, I just want to rise and thank you, Mr. Kakharian, for the thoughtful presentation this morning that I think serves to educate and remind folks of the struggle. I am particularly appreciative of the Armenian community here in the city of Los Angeles. I went through elementary school, high school, got a degree in political science, and no one ever said a word. No one ever said a word about Armenian genocide. And here, really just in the last ten to fifteen years, this community in Los Angeles as an epicenter, has made this an issue that's on the lips of the nation. And so we thank you for that, and we thank you for engaging in struggle. It's very important, because we know with all that America has to offer, all that the United States has to offer, it would be easy for people to just say, "That's in the past. We're going to let that go, and we're going to move on and, you know, fully enjoy the benefits of this society and leave the struggle to the side." And this community has not done that. They've lifted up the banner, they've held it high, and they've given us something to rally around and stood up for justice in a way that I think is consistent with the tradition of all Americans. So thank you so much.
Mr. Kakharian, back to you.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. President. I want to thank all of our honorees for taking the time to be here today and allow us to recognize them. And I want to thank all of you colleagues for all of your thoughtful comments, but also for joining together with this community every year in solemn remembrance of this genocide. I know many of you were at genocide activities on April twenty-fourth, and we all thank you for your presence there. You know, no matter how many years we do this, no matter how long we keep coming back to talk about the Armenian genocide, the issue is never old so long as there is no justice. A genocide that's denied and a genocide for which there is no justice is a genocide that continues. And it's continuing to this day, and the threats are continuing to this day. And it really doesn't matter what your ethnicity is, what your faith is, what your nationality is, what your background is, as long as the atrocities of humankind against humankind go without punishment and go without response, all of us continue to be vulnerable to those sorts of atrocities. And so by being here today and by remembering we're doing our part to fight against the future atrocities and the future genocides and the future instances of man's inhumanity to man. So, members, thank you all very, very much.
A lot of people are moving out. Over 10,000 companies have left California, and most of the illegal aliens, they don't pay taxes, and especially the ones on the streets selling all that garbage that they've stolen from the stores. So you're going to have to have a lot of more fees, and people need to expect that. Now I want to also talk about the fact that, well, I think I can go to my public comment now.
Let's give her her one minute for general public comment.
I, as you know, I am a teacher, and I'm very concerned about the teachers having their retirement benefits being embezzled by the Los Angeles Unified School District, California State Teachers Retirement System, CalSTRS, and PARS, Public Agency Retirement System. I worked on this for five years, Mr. President, and I broke it. I got the documentation October 24, 2016. They have not denied that I caught them in this embezzlement. Only thing they're fighting is the statute of limitations, and I'm fighting the statute of limitation starts when you are aware of the fraud. Now, they are embezzling millions from teachers' retirement system. What they're doing is taking the money out of CalSTRS and shifting it to PARS and then withdrawing it, taking it all out of that account, wiping it out. I have the proof. I want the teachers to call the union, U2LA, call CalSTRS at 1-800-228-5453, and call PARS at 1-800-540-6369 and request your participant input history, all the money you put in those accounts.
Thank you. Okay, let's get Mr. Herman. Mr. Herman, you have items 1A through 1F, then you have 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 8, 9, 45, 46, 47, 8, 49, 50 through 54. And then your general public comment.
I'd like to submit these for the record before we get started, sir. All 15 council members and one ignorant city attorney, please. Anyone? Thank you, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, those of you who are aware of the process of a lien is, sometimes you have to be represented by the American Trust Fund of the NRA, because as you see on item F, a lien from CD2, that jackass Armenian at 6456 North Babcock Avenue, well, the Babcock Armenian is leaning on a property for solely $2,419.61. That's a fucking Holocaust when you lose your home and you end up in the street. In addition to that, the jackass on item number 2 from CD2, fucking Armenian, is talking about improvement for maintenance up of Victory Boulevard. Well, why don't you first waive all the interest of 300% off those that are suffering in your community and just let them pay the goddamn lien, the fine? Why do you hold people hostage, Mr. Armenian Paul Krikorian? Why do you disrupt the lives of people who have to work three motherfucking jobs, everybody, like the rest of you? Why do we go through this on a daily basis? This is extortion and harassment, the same way I've been retaliated by the city of Los Angeles, for the record. Also, 1C, mommy in CD6, yeah, with their big red lipstick and that tight skinny dress off of 764-
Stay on topic, Mr. Herman.
I, mommy, continued from the council meeting March 22, 2019. So they make you come here and spend your $22 for parking, you stand here and protest, and you don't do shit. If you want to waive your lien, you get up here like an American citizen and waive your license and say, "I'm not going to pay that 300%. I never received a certified letter, Mr. City Attorney. I was never addressed personally as the homeowner or the property owner, and now I'm getting fucked." What were my other items? Mr. Wesson from Pasadena? Oh, playing hardball at me. Fine, I can handle it. I signed up on item 7, which is CD10 hearing, relative application determined convenience necessity for fucking more sales of alcohol.
Give him his one minute for general public comment.
Fuck the DA, fuck the city attorney, and fuck you, Mr. Fubble, 80 North Euclid Avenue, not South Pasadena, nigger. I was in Pasadena in council chambers, talking to Terry, the mayor, and I told him about why your son had two different addresses, creating some type of mail fraud, Mr. Wesson. Mr. Wesson, badass Mr. Wesson, 42 USC 1983. Fuck you on behalf of public interest. Stop taking money from people. Stop extortion. Stop your criminal activity in LA and pay Mr. Spindler to get the fuck out of LA and help the rest of us get the fuck out of LA, because that stupid, eh-eh-eh, Armenian there and that fat slob, Mr. Peppa Pig from CD5, always say good things about Armenians, but thanks to the Turks, fuck you!
Thank you. Your time is over. Ms. Rodriguez, I think you're going to bring us back to sanity here.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, if you'd please join me in recognizing the Latina Public Service Academy that is here visiting us today, if you'd give them a-
Just give them a round of applause. And back, welcome. Welcome, folks, welcome.
Ladies, welcome to your Los Angeles City Hall. We're very excited to have you here, led by the indomitable Ana Kubas. Thank you for also being here. But ladies, you know, this is government in action, and we appreciate that you are here visiting us today, and welcome. We're happy to have you.
All right, let me jump back to multi-public comment. I want to call Mr. Previn. I did see him earlier. Mr. Previn, you have items 2, 3, 8, 47, 48, 49, 50, and 54, then your general public comment.
Good morning, sir.
Morning.
Eric Previn from Studio City and also the 3rd District over at the county. You've changed your practice a little bit today, which I appreciate. Now, the tobacco permitting charges, going up from 300 to 457, you know, for a permit, doesn't seem like a lot to a guy like you, but these folks have been hammered a lot. Now, I'm not, I'm not for cigarettes, but raising about $600,000, $700,000 for you all doesn't seem to make a lot of sense, taking it out of ordinary bodega and folks who run little shops trying to get by. Now, they don't only sell tobacco traditionally, but these costs push against everything they're trying to do, David Ruh, even the healthy stuff. So I don't know. I just feel like this is just gratuitous. Item number 14, you amended, so all the people who signed up on 14 should get a chance to speak if you want, and the amendment for the record is you've, you're starting the pre-vetting, which doesn't sound great, on May 28th, but maybe that's something. I know everybody's waiting, and we got to move this along. Thank you, Mr. Harris Dawson, for moving it along. And no thank you to Wells Fargo, who are getting a one-year extension from Claire Bartels over what looks like such a technicality. We should get rid of these guys already. They've been there since 2008. I remember Mike Fuer jumping up and down, but that was after all of the egregious ripping off of Angelino's, and now we're taking another year going forward from now? That is just a great disappointment. We look forward to, I never thought I'd say this, Bank of America, Union Bank, and Chase taking over for that pernicious group, and they're no less pernicious.
Mr. Previn, those items have already been voted on.
Okay, Mr. Previn.
No, 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 don't, I'm back on, I'm back on point, sir. I never left point, quite frankly. So in addition to that, I just want to talk about the liquor license. Now, CD10 is a great CD, and that's yours, sir, and approving liquor licenses is something you do with great frequency now that you're running for office.
Mr. Previn, that item has been continued. It is not available for public comment.
Continued? Okay, fine, because there was no LAPD report, that's why.
No, Mr. Previn, get off of item 7.
Okay, you're amending things like item 49 as well, sir, and when you amend things on the fly, people need to know what the heck is going on. I was taking a look at last week, and, I mean, at the week before you went on. Item 49, you amended, this is again, city-owned property project, so we're excited about it, but what's the amendment? And let the people know what's happening, sir. If you want, I can go to my, oh, final point before I go to the general. I don't think anybody loves the airport, the jail, the inauguration of the mayor more than AECOM, but giving them a hotel project? I just think that that kind of bends credibility for the public when they are your inside contractor. Some people call them the shadow government group. I don't know. Why are we doing that? Why would we, I mean, is that a great idea to be giving AECOM a hotel project? And how many stars will it have? Is it a two-star, four-star? Or are we looking at something like a seven-star over in Dubai, the Burj Al Arab? I find that group doesn't do work openly, because when we ask the city or the county to share what AECOM is doing, they say we're not interested.
Mr. Previn has one minute.
All right, I'll make this real brief, and it's not personal, but Mitch O'Farrell and this entire body, minus one or two, voted to scan for affiliation contractors who come to City Hall looking to do a little business to the NRA. Now, that's like if I wanted to come and sell my, "Mr. Previn, are you connected in any way to the NRA?" Well, no, I'm not, but why are you asking? Because there are cops and people who run companies, I bet Greg Smith is in the, I don't know, but to do that is completely illegal. So we wrote a community impact statement, that's where you get five minutes at the table, but of course that wasn't given. And what happened subsequent to this October motion by Mr. O'Farrell looking to get a little press and activity was he got sued by the NRA. Now, we're on the hook for a lot of money. So Bloomingfield's going to join with me and say, "All the office holders will cover the cost of ending that litigation by canceling the crazy ordinance that makes us seem like a authoritarian nation, and also paying whoever filed the grievance a short, small amount of money. We don't want to overpay anybody."
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Previn. Let me get Mr. Sacks, Arnold Sacks. You have items 1 and item 49. Mr. Sacks, please come forward. Item 1, item 49, and then your general public comment.
Yes, thank you again, Arnold Ross Sacks. Again, with the items that are held for public hearing, and you don't allow the public to have a hearing on all those items, it reminds me of what the county did.
Mr. Sacks, you have item 1 and item 49.
Got it, sir. There's other items for public hearing you're not allowing us to speak on.
Mr. Sacks, you have items 1 and item 49.
I got it. I got it. And I'm saying there's other items that are-
Mr. Sacks, you want to, just give Mr. Sacks his one minute for general public comment. No, Mr. Sacks, I warned you four times.
Okay, thank you. Did you know that street vending is legal in the city of Los Angeles? Street vending is legal in the city of Los Angeles, and Mark Ridley Thomas Jr., when he was in state legislature, eliminated the Board of Equalization. That means the state is not collecting any more sales tax for the cities to have available for them to use. That means any taxes that are eligible to be collected by the state are no longer eligible to be used because they're not going to be collected. What is the city's plan? I'd also like to know, with their budget hearings coming up, are they going to have the director, Brian Darcy from the DWP show up for the hearing so we can hear how the DWP got 2,000 new members in 2008 and swallowed them up without missing a hiccup? I've had seven attempts directed at me on my life. I don't give a shit.
Thank you, Mr. Sacks. If I could have Mr. Watkins, Bill Watkins, you have items 49 and 51, and then general public comment. So he gets two minutes, one for 49, one for 51, and his general public comment.
Good morning. I made a mistake. Can I change to 7 and public comment?
7 has been continued.
I'm sorry? Oh!
You have items 49 and 51.
I just have public comment then.
Okay, let's give him his one minute for general public comment.
Thank you. I look forward to talking about the budget today. I wanted to tell all the members, you look really great today, and City Hall looks beautiful. Be nice if someone looked. Thank you, sir. Look amazing. I find our city and our community, thank you, I find our city and my community in District 14, Mr. Wezar, I find it to be sort of dirty and not pretty. I hope we have a budget that reflects our desire to make our community look more like we do in this chamber. We look beautiful. You look great. This council, this chamber, looks beautiful. My community does not. I want us to start looking at pedestrian cleaners, the Clean Street proposal that's out there. Let's get out there and clean this sucker up. Sorry, I said sucker. That's the worst language I ever used here. Let's clean this community up, and I look forward to partnering, but people don't call me back. So I look forward to talking at 1 o'clock more about the budget. Thanks to guys.
Okay, thank you. Let's bring up Mr. Raza, Ryan Raza-Farsah. You have items 1A through 1F, items 2 through 9, items 45, 46, 47, 48, 49, 50, 51, to, all the way to 54, and your general public comment. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Honorable President Wesson, honorable council members. My name is Ryan Raza-Farsah, and I'm here speaking on quite a number of items this morning. Number one is the liens that is on properties 6422 North Lindy, 750 North Starborn Road, C76 North Moria, and so on and so forth. These liens are obviously part of this necessity for the city to balance its budget, which it is failing to do so. I want to thank the cities of Fullerton and Huntington Beach, and Orange County, and the city of Beverly Hills, and LA County for giving me a letter. I asked them, "How are they spending our money?", and only three cities responded, when I went up and down to three states. The city does not know how to balance the budget. So where we go to number 8, actually, number 7, I hope you guys approve alcohol, I like alcohol, it's good for you. So I know you postponed number 7, but number 8, let's talk about that tobacco permit. I'm a retailer of multi-AMPMs in Southern California, and LA County, and Orange County. This is an increase of 45% on the tobacco permit fee from $300 to $437. I kind of find it, it's kind of like a little bit excessive. Let's look at it. $300 to $437 is a 45% increase, ladies and gentlemen. So whatever that budget that is being used to pay for the bills, it's now going to generate $605,000 more on the backs of nearly $4,500 retailers. So these are excessive fees that are just increasing slowly, yearly, yearly, from liability to workers' comp, and now your Edison, and the water bill wants to go up higher, too. The cities have intention of raising their water. Now, let's go to number 46 to remove those items from the ESCO account. I would like you to do that, to remove those items from the ESCO account. And lastly, number 51, this is the big-ticket item this morning, Mr. Wezar, $40 million. You guys are going to issue up to $40 million, not to exceed that, to renovate, rehabilitate, and purchase 120-unit multifamily project. So is that, is that for the people, or what is that? What do you-
Actually, number seven, I hope you guys approve alcohol. I like alcohol. It's good for you. So I know you postponed number seven. But number eight, let's talk about that tobacco permit. I'm a retailer of multi-AMPMs in Southern California, and LA County, and Orange County. This is an increase of 45% on the tobacco permit fee from $300 to $437. I kind of find it, it's kind of like a little bit excessive. Let's look at it. $300 to $437 is a 45% increase, ladies and gentlemen. So whatever that budget that is being used to pay for the bills, it's now going to generate $605,000 more on the backs of nearly $4,500 retailers. So these are excessive fees that are just increasing slowly, yearly, yearly, from liability to workers' comp, and now your Edison, and the water bill wants to go up higher, too. The cities have intention of raising their water. Now, let's go to number 46, to remove those items from the ESCO account. I would like you to do that, to remove those items from the ESCO account. And lastly, number 51. This is the big-ticket item this morning, Mr. Weezer, $40 million. You guys are going to issue up to $40 million not to exceed that to renovate, rehabilitate, and purchase 120-unit multifamily project? So is that for the people, or what is that? What are you going to use the money for? I'm trying to understand, because the city clerk didn't give me an answer on how we're spending our money for the last few years. Only the cities of Fullerton, Huntington Beach, and Beverly Hills said that we didn't put debts on your back. So when I go on that, I'm going to finish up with my regular comment.
Let's give him his one minute for general.
I want to thank Donald Trump, Governor Newsom, and former Governor Brown for the Opportunity Zones, and Governor Brown of Oregon. I am the owner of a farm at 1330 West Main Street in Sheridan, Oregon, 97378, with a water permit, two wells on the property, water permit 49597 in Oregon, under Wallace-B. Hyder. Priority date is December 31, 1907. It is the South Yom Hill County River's first mouth. I have submitted my form for the Oregon Water Resource Board on May 9, 2018, and it's in the Opportunity Zone. The Opportunity Zone is a program established by Congress to help bring jobs and investment to low-income urban areas. So I'm just very thankful I'm in the Opportunity Zone. God bless America, and the U.S. investors currently holding $2.3 trillion in unrealized capital gains can invest in those Opportunity Zones. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. And Madam Clerk, let's vote on some items. Let's vote on items 45, 46, 47, and 48. Please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. Thank you. Now we'll vote on items 50, 51, and 52. Please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Now, we'll vote on items 53 and 54. If you would open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
And I also believe we can vote on item 49 as amended. Please...
Yes, Mr. President. Item 49, that amending motion has been posted and circulated for council's consideration.
Okay, so on that item, let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Okay. Okay, let's vote on also items 3 through 6. 3 through 6. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Items 8 and 9. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Thank you. Now, we're going to take up item 14. I'd like to recognize Mr. Weezer for a verbal amendment on item 14. Mr. Weezer?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the council instruct the Department of Cannabis Regulation to report back with a process for social equity applicants' approval under the Phase III application window, regardless of applying in an area of undue concentration, so long as the city council has deemed to have found the approval of the application would serve a public convenience or necessity. I further move that we delete the language in the current ordinance with respect to having social equity applicants not being able to apply under Phase III.
And a second for that motion?
Well, what we'll do now is I'm going to open up public comment for 10 minutes on this item. So let's get Jorge Nuneo Esteban Araya Evelyn Scott Brandon Brinson, please come forward.
I changed this.
And, Mr. President, as the speakers make their way forward, amending motion 14A has also been posted and circulated for council's consideration.
Why don't, before we start public comment, why don't we read this amendment into the record as well?
Amending motion 14A was moved by Mr. Wesson and seconded by Mr. Harris Dawson, and that is to adopt two following recommendations. One is to instruct the Department of Cannabis Regulation to begin the pre-vetting process for social equity applicants no later than Tuesday, May 28, 2019. And the second is to instruct the department to begin the application window for round one of Phase III, no later than Tuesday, September 3.
Thank you. Okay, let's have the folk come up that I call, and that'll be 10 minutes, if we can start the clock. Yes, sir?
My name is Brandon Brinson. I'm a Tier 1 social equity applicant for Phase III, and I just got a question for you guys. How would you guys feel if you were having to shove money down every month while waiting on a program that the city promised to help us, and it's fucking us up? And Ms. Cat Packer, you got to do something, baby. You got to really do something, because what you're doing, and the programs, and the different kind of recommendations you're trying to start up, we don't need those. We... There are people in this room right now that have properties that we don't need what you're trying to do. We need to open up right now. We have properties, and we are ready to go right now. And the city of LA needs to go ahead and open up this process. Thank you.
Next, identify yourself.
Hello, City Council. My name is Esteban Araya. I am a Tier 1 social equity applicant for the Phase III licensing. It's been a long process, a little bit over two years. Also been waiting with some real estate, however, have gone through some... Learning the hard way, corporate structuring is not as simple as everyone thinks. Structuring a dispensary, coming from the neighborhoods, or sometimes with the background that we come with, it's something that we do need compliance. So I wanted to touch on two or three notes and say thank you for those recommendations. Number one, we would love for them to expand the analysis, so that it can be completed in a timely manner. We do recommend for technical assistance, because not everyone is, you know, capable of putting together a business structure when there hasn't been enough community outreach for people to understand what are their options. Even if I do have a property, I have a general comment as well.
Thank you. Thank you. If I could get Vina Parrick, Sarah Armstrong, Amir Gresham, and then Zachary Pips. Pips, yes, ma'am?
Hi, my name is Evelyn Scott, and I'm also a Phase III social equity applicant. I've had a location for almost two years now. And of course, I've been up here time to time to let you guys know that it has been a struggle. And I just urge you guys to move forward now. We don't need the programs. We don't need the technical assistance. We need you to move forward with the pre-vetting stage now. There are not many licenses available. Some of the programs and some of the things that you guys are doing, it's for thousands of people. You only have a little over 100 licenses available. What are you guys doing? We have to start this now. You have just about 100 people who have locations, who are ready to go, who are standing in front of you, asking, begging every day. We need you guys to start now. We're losing money. It's a very sad thing. So I hope and I pray that you guys start now.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Sarah?
Thank you, sir. Good morning. I am Sarah Armstrong, Director of Industry Affairs for Americans for Safe Access and Policy Chair for the Southern California Coalition. The most difficult challenge that people face when they want to open a retail cannabis business is a location. If you reimpose caps or do anything more to limit the available land, you will materially hurt not only social equity, but the industry as a whole. Compliant land, much of it was taken away between October and December of 2017, when new sensitive uses were imposed and community plan areas were reduced. Please, don't kill a whole industry. We know that it's difficult for you guys to make that leap of faith based on the rogue operators who have done so much damage in your communities. But people seeking licensure are not those people. Please, give us the land we need and move forward as soon as you can.
Thank you. Next speaker. Identify yourself.
Good morning. My name is Vina Parrick. I'm with Aon Botanica. We are a female-led Tier 1 social equity applicant for Phase III. And supporting the people who have spoken before me, my colleagues, I want to reiterate that for two years, we have worked incredibly hard to pull together a business plan, make a business model, secure investment. We have been so blessed to be able to have secured investment and a compliant retail space. Further delays will really inhibit our ability to have a business. Our funds are not limited. We are a family-run small business. We're so grateful to this organization and the DCR for putting in place a social equity program, and we really encourage you to not delay any further. We do not need technical assistance, and we want to support the development of technical assistance for others who do need it. And we volunteer to be part of a group that can support following our progress and putting together a technical program to do that. We want to donate our times for that as well. Thank you.
Next, please identify yourself.
Good morning. My name is Amir Gresham. I'm a social equity applicant partnered with Fourth Movement. I want to say thank you to the city council. I had a very compelling speech prepared, but in light of motion 14A, I just wanted to say thank you in taking the next steps in this process, because there are people who have mobilized and are prepared to take advantage of this opportunity and demonstrate our purpose. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next. And if I could get Christian Miles and Flalina Flores. Yes?
Hello. My name is Zachary Pitts. I'm with the L.A. Delivery Alliance. We're beseeching the council to not impose any further restrictions or requirements on the DCR. These types of requirements, while the intent is positive, they're going to lead to further delays, and that's what this industry and that's what this city can't take anymore. We have a problem of enforcement and rogue shops, and a lot of those problems can be alleviated by the DCR starting Phase III licensing for delivery and for social equity. So again, as the previous speakers have said, we truly ask you to do everything in your power to speed things along and not put further burdens on the DCR. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, next, identify yourself, please.
Hi, I am Sonia Maria Casas, and I'm here due to a video that I saw of her Wesson violating me, molesting me, raping me. So I like to... I saw the video. You were at the Union Rescue Mission last night, and I'm here to ask for, actually, the... In recompense, I'd like to know what we can settle, what we can offer.
Right. For the second clause.
We'll have to watch the video. What time can I meet with you? How can I get ahold of you? To watch the video.
Mr. President, I don't think the speaker is addressing the agenda item.
I don't know what she's addressing. But you're definitely not on this topic, ma'am. This is item 14. So let me get the other folk that are speaking on this subject.
I'd like to find out what time I can meet with you to watch the video.
I don't even have a clue what you're talking about. No, no, Sergeant, let me have the next speaker.
Hi, City Council.
Yes, identify yourself, please.
Yes, Kristen Miles. I'm Director of Development for Fourth Movement. I just want to say that we're ready to go, and we're ready for opportunity to meet preparation. We've been preparing over 100 candidates for this application process, and they're well-deserving, and we're ready to write this successful social equity story for the city of LA and to set the expectation for other cities to follow. Thank you.
Can we have the sergeant speak to the young lady that was here earlier and take her statement? I think she's in the back, sergeant, with the black trousers. If you could talk to her. Yes?
Good morning. My name is Kalina Flores. I'm a social equity applicant with Fourth Movement. Just wanted to say, black women are more likely to be dismissed and sent home without treatment when we go to the doctor and complain about pain. I know this to be true, because I was dismissed once a week for two months, only to end up in the emergency room, being asked why I had not come sooner. I failed that quarter at UCLA and had to pay out of pocket to retake those courses. I turned to cannabis for pain management and to deal with anxiety. It's one of the reasons I'm committed to being a part of the industry. I figure rather than saying the same thing each time I come speak on behalf of moving the process forward, each time I would share a different thing that is being left out of the conversation when social equity applicants are not granted a seat at the table. Thank you for moving the process forward so that we can begin our work in being a part of the conversation.
Okay, let me take a couple of more. Leslie Ringold and Christina Marsh. Ignite, you'll close it. I didn't see you. I'm somewhere. Okay, identify yourself.
Hi, good morning. My name is Leslie Ringold, Vice President of Development for the Fourth Movement. As many have stated here already today, we are ready to begin moving forward this process and ask that you remove the technical assistance from the recommendations. While the importance of having technical assistance in place with social equity operators is important, this is only going to cause delays for operators who have already had business plans and real estate in place and are ready to move forward with licensing now. We encourage you not to make it part of a requirement for those who are applying as part of Round 1, and put it in place for those who will be applying for Round 2. As an organization, we spent the last five months training and preparing our partners to be successful operators in the industry. In the past year, developing our own resources that have aided them in their success. So I know there's a motion before you today to begin to move that process forward and finalize timelines. I just encourage that you sign that and begin to move the process forward. Thank you.
Good morning, Herb and Council. I am Christina Marsh, and I'm with Equity First Coalition. We support the DCR's social equity program and the vision behind reparative justice, and we are against any unnecessary delays. Postponement has been caused by bureaucracy and the city's inability to allocate resources in a timely manner. The recommended funding must be ready to allocate. We must have expanded analysis, and it must be completed in a timely manner. We recommend funding the technical assistance, and it must be ready to allocate. We support the Community Reinvestment Fund, maximized by cannabis tax revenue.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Come on.
Greetings, all. Ignite with the Life Development Group. I honestly don't even know where to start. It is truly amazing that those who say that they don't even want a license is trying to hold up this process. It is even more amazing that so many sit around knowing the detrimental effects that the so-called War on Drugs has had on our people, and yet take no action to move things forward. It is truly unfortunate that 180 illegal, excuse me, pre-Ico's were given the right to operate while black men are still being incarcerated at an eight-to-one rate compared to white men. And not to leave our Brown brothers out, however, that percentage was much lower. They were only one point something more likely to be incarcerated, which still leaves us at a 7% higher rate than them as well. It is truly unfortunate that we are here begging for something that is doing.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. That concludes... That concludes public comment. Mr. Corretts?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I have one concern, which I would hope we would at least look at and make sure we address, which is a logical one for me, in a way, as someone who represents part of the Valley. But I am concerned about item 1D and the possibility that it may delay the rest of the process as we look at including the Valley. So I don't know if...
We adjusted that with item 14A. Didn't your staff show it to you?
How was that adjusted?
We just did. We just read it, and we changed the timetable back to where it should be.
So if...
Just give... Would somebody give Mr. Corretts 14A?
So this guarantees that it won't delay the process to include the Valley.
Correct.
If that is truly the case, then I have no other objections. But I hope we have looked at this carefully to make sure that that isn't part of the process, because...
Yes, Mr. Corretts, we have.
Everything we've done so... Everything we've done so far with this process has gone much more slowly than we expected.
Than any of us have expected. Okay, Mr. Weezer, it's my understanding you want some clarifying language.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to clarify my previous motion. The first part of my motion stands, which is to move that the council instructed Department of Cannabis Regulation to report back with a process for social equity applicants approval under the Phase Three application window, regardless if applying in an area of undue concentration, so long as the city council has deemed to have found that approval of the application would serve a public convenience or necessity. That's an instruction for the Department of Cannabis. My second part, I wanted to clarify, what's before us today would not allow social equity applicants to apply under areas with undue concentration. But if we were to live up to the spirit of that, I think we should correct that because the areas that will have undue concentration will most likely be those areas that we're trying to assist social equity applicants. So we wanted to go back to the original way that it was drafted to say that if there is a public convenience and necessity once an undue concentration has been found, which will allow us to better find a balance and allow more social equity opportunities, the following language will correct that, which is to say, for the move that the city attorney be requested to return with a new draft ordinance that will provide approval of qualified social equity applicants to apply under the Phase Three application window, regardless of applying in an area of undue concentration, so long as the city council has deemed to have found that the approval of the application would serve a public convenience or necessity. Thank you.
Okay.
For clarification, your second recommendation requests a new draft ordinance. However, are you recommending the two ordinances before you that are attached to the filed date of April twenty-sixth? What is your recommendation for those?
Yes, that we move those forward today, Mr. President. We don't want to hold this process up, but the other draft ordinance, I believe, if we work with the city attorney's office and the council president's office, that could be expedited, come back relatively soon. So we move that, those forward today.
With that clarification, then I'll even second the motion that you put in. All right, so now let's prepare to vote on this item as amended. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
That motion's approved. All right. Okay, we, A-ten Tergamon, item one E. Please come to the center aisle.
I would like to let you know that this item was postponed from last month to today without anybody notifying me that I need a letter of authorization notarizing me to represent my mother. She's eighty-one years old, and apparently I'm not allowed to speak on her behalf until I have that letter. So I would like to ask if we can postpone this.
Okay, let me stop you for a minute. What address in particular are you concerned about?
Six-four-five-six Bobcock.
Six-four-five-six, so that's one F.
That's correct, yes.
Yes, Mr. President, that is for Council District Two. And actually, the Department of Building and Safety's recommendation is to receive and file the item due to a ownership change.
Okay, well, Mr. Krikorian?
Mr. President, it would be my request as well that we receive and file the matter. And my staff will come and explain it to you right now.
Yeah, so his staff, if you could go over to the pillar to my right, Mr. Krikorian's staff will explain to you what has occurred. So let's vote on that item. Let's open the roll.
Excuse me, Mr. President. On item one, the Department of Building and Safety is recommending that one E and F be received and filed due to ownership changes, that one B and D be confirmed at amounts four dollars less than the stated amounts.
Okay, let's vote on those items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. And this will, we will not be voting on one D. Tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Now we'll go to item two. On item two, let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
All right, let me take some more general public comment. Gonzalo Salgado, Donnie Anderson, Virgil Grant, Sarah Armstrong, Jorge Nuno, Eric Alstrom. If I called your name? Yes, sir, you are.
Hi, I'm new to this, so I really don't know what I'm doing. My name's Gonzalo Salgado. I'm representing my city, I guess, South Central, I mean, South Los Angeles. I have a comment, I guess. I don't really know where it stays.
Go ahead, go ahead.
So I basically want this, you guys kind of read my mind. I was contaminated with scabies, and I did everything to clean my house, but I've been noticing that the city doesn't do this proper job. I don't know if you guys are using the proper chemicals to disinfect our streets. So I came across this across the street, and they're going to disinfect the city. So I think my city should be also contaminated because we're just reinvesting ourselves. And then there's also oak trees down my community, which cause reactions through the scabies mites. It brings squirrels into our community. And I also think that it also controls you and allows, oh, there's also water, a water issue. There's leakage all over this school property. I talked to them, they're subcontracting the land work, and there's no one paying care of it.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, your time's expired. Virgil?
How you doing? My name is Virgil Grant. I'd like to speak on the undue concentration that does take a swipe at Phase Two social equity applicants, so I would have another look at that. Also, I want to, the delay of technical assistance in all of these reports, what we don't get is to collect tax dollars, no money for enforcement. It kills a business before it gets started. A business loses money. Delays will only kill a business before it gets started. More licensing will help combat the unlicensed shops. So we need to get this thing moving fast and moving now. If I have money, our property, and I'm ready to go, what do I need technical assistance for? I'm a pre-Ico. They can come talk to me about technical assistance. That's what CMA does, California Minority Alliance. We'll bring technical assistance to the industry for free and get this ball rolling. We do not need any more delays. We need to license these people now. We're talking about four months. If I pay ten thousand dollars on my lease, we're talking another forty thousand dollars that I'mma lose before I can open up. This cannot happen. This is a gross misjudgment of DCR and whoever put these recommendations into place. Let's get this ball rolling. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah?
Thank you, sir, and thank you for your quick work on these issues today. I hope that going forward, the council will work closely with Ms. Packer and her group to ensure that from now on, the council is a partner and not an overseer. Ms. Packer knows what's going on in her community. She does outreach all the time. She knows the effect that new council demands will have on her department. She is beyond reasonable, and I hope that going forward, there will be more collaboration between the council and Ms. Packer, and that before you stand in this honorable, before this honorable body and impose a restriction or have a new idea, that you have first discussed it with them so that you know the unintended consequences of what may be a good idea for the future, but not too workable now. Thank you for your help today, and we look forward to working with you in the future.
Thank you. Mr. Anderson?
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Donnie Anderson, the President of California Minority Alliance. We came in here and got your attention a little under four years now. We're still here. It's killing us. I've been the one who, we helped fund Measure M. We helped fund it. We helped put to bed Measure N. But now it's hindering social equity. I'm spending seven thousand a month for two years in July. It'd be two years in July. I'm not asking for nothing. I have my funding, but my funder is looking at me like, what the hell is going on? It's becoming a problem. And any investor that wants to invest in Phase Three, if they don't see it moving forward, they're not going to bring their money to the table. I work with people with money all day, but at the end of the day, they only going to invest in what's going to benefit them. That's it. Move this shit along.
Next.
Good morning. My name is Kika Keith. I've stood here before. I have a property on Crenshaw Boulevard. We've been paying since last year. Thank you for the motion to speed up this process or at least give us some timelines. That's all we're asking for. We're not asking for a handout. We're asking for communication so we can properly prepare, give us the ability to compete. Thank you.
Yes?
Hi, my name is Madison Shockley. I'm a, I grew up in the Tenth District. I'm a Tier One social equity applicant and have been working hard to prepare to apply for a license. I appreciate the council voting to approve Measure fourteen. Please continue to do everything that can be done to move this process along as fast as possible, because as somebody who is trying to apply, it's hard to get investors to commit to capitalizing my business. It's hard to get a location without a timeline for what's going to happen. So anything that can be done to make sure there's a solid timeline will help us have certainty about what's going to happen and allow us to put our businesses together more efficiently. Also, if there's money for technical assistance, if possible, I'd ask that maybe it be granted to the organizations that have sprung up grassroots and already done the technical assistance for you guys. Thank you.
And give my best to your father. Okay, anyone else here that signed up for public comment that hasn't been called? Why don't you come up and identify yourself? Good to see you.
Good morning. Norine McClendon, Executive Director of Concerned Citizens of South Central Los Angeles. I'm here to, there are a couple of things regarding the social equity applicants. Number one, technical assistance with, as part of GoVerde, Think and Grow Lab, we have been already providing technical assistance. Green Believers has been providing technical assistance. That is not something that needs to hold up the process. In addition to that, I just have to say that when we look at social equity, this is about those people that were affected. African-American men and their families were affected more proportion, disproportionately, and so the equity needs to be distributed more equitably along with them. So please do not lump it into people of color and water down the effects and the redress for African-American families. Thank you.
Thanks, Norine.
Hi, Joe.
Hi.
Hi, Cherie Franklin, co-founder of Think and Grow Lab and GoVerde Incubator. We have seven licensed Phase Two applicants in our incubator, and we're training them every day. We welcome everybody at the city council to our meetings every Thursday from one to five, six, seven P.M. We're also working in partnership with Green Believers to make sure that people are understanding that, how they qualify as a Tier One or Tier Two. We have a radio show, and we're willing to partner. We're partnering with Americans for Safe Access, and Donnie and Virgil is part of CMA, and also the Kareem Webb's Group. We believe that the people in this industry can provide the best training. I'm a consultant here in the city of Los Angeles, and I've helped create business source centers. There is not one that specializes, but we will work in partnership with the existing source centers to do the basic work. They can do business training on business entity and marketing and branding. So we're going to flat those and use those resources. Thank you.
Thank you. Next. Identify yourself, please.
Greetings. My name's Chauncey Bullock. I am the CEO of Greenhaven, L.A., COO, or partnering as the social equity applicant with the GoVerde Incubator. Now, in addition to that, we do have a barrage of experienced personnel that can help facilitate without going beyond the needs of desiring to come up with any ideas other than moving forward with the social equity Phase Three Tier One applicant, is one standing in front of you, but experienced also in the industry to be able to help any other licensed operator that should get a license. We have a team with GoVerde, with the Think and Grow Lab, with Green Believers, and we can have a way to make it happen. So please reach out to us. Meetings every Thursday. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Autry. Anyone else? Please come and get behind Ms. Autry. Yes?
Yes, thank you. As a member of the Skid Row Community Improvement Coalition, I'd first like for the record a request, a bid for the church, the property at six, I believe, at six zero six East Sixth Street for the relocation, hopefully. I requested for other agenda items as well, Mr. Wesson. So it's just one minute that I get?
Yes.
What about the other items?
Ms. Autry, you signed up for general public comment. Go ahead, that's what you got.
Okay, we want this property. We've placed this bid. I also would like, that's for the permanent relocation of the refreshment, for the refreshed spot, right? So we can vote on that in the Homeless and Poverty Commission. Also, perpetrated by the Mexican mafia, Malasavatrucha, and other street gangs, some Black gangs, I'd like to, for the record, report that women are being attacked with urine, masturbation. I've been myself and other Black woman.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Autry. And the items that you signed up to speak on, the public comment was already satisfied. Thank you. Your time's expired. Is there any other individuals that signed up for public comment that did not call their name? Okay, then, then, sir, come on. Identify yourself. Yes, sir.
How you doing? My name's Anthony Suggs. I'm a resident from Long Beach, California, a social equity applicant. I was just trying to come and speak to, I know I came a little late, but I was just trying to make sure everything was rolling out process right, because I already got all my paperwork and documents ready, and I just wanted to make sure that everything was going to plan. I heard that it was going to be rolling out toward September, so I just wanted to make my voice heard to say thank you for everything, and hopefully everything rolls out white.
Thank you. I hope you're right.
Yeah, all right. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay. That then concludes public comment. Anybody else? Okay, then that concludes general public comment. That brings us where, Madam Clerk?
Mr. President, for item thirty-four, an amending motion has been posted and circulated for council's consideration.
Okay, let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
And, Mr. President, for items one A and one D, amending motions have been posted and circulated.
So let's vote on reconsideration then at this time, correct? Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
All right, now let's vote on the items as amended. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Okay, what is before this body, Madam Clerk?
Council has motions for posting and referral.
They're posted, they're referred. Announcements, members? Mr. Bonin?
Yeah. I'd like to do it.
Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna recognize Mr. Bonin quickly. Yes, Mr. Bonin?
Thank you, Mr. President. Folks, come on up. Debbie? So colleagues, we've been hearing a lot about the Green New Deal, and we have been hearing a lot about the existential threat to our climate and to our planet and to our children. On Friday night, Ms. Martinez rocked the house at the E-Bell Theater as the Sunrise Movement came to Los Angeles to talk about the Green New Deal. Yesterday, the mayor unveiled his version of the Green New Deal. Mr. Krikorian and I have been working very hard to try to get DWP to one hundred percent sustainable, and everybody is talking about the environment. And we just celebrated Earth Day, and because of that, I wanted to spend a moment just celebrating, celebrating and acknowledging somebody who has really been on the forefront of this issue for a very long time, who was out blazing the trail long before many of us were. Mr. Coretts, would you please come up and join us? Mr. Keretz, would you please come up and join us? So, somebody asked me why I wanted to do this, and, because they said, he's not retiring, and he's not taking another job. And I said, well, you know, I just wanted to be nice. Nobody found that at all believable. So, the answer is, it's because it's deserved. So, we have a really, really insanely long resolution that his staff helped us on detailing all of the work that Mr. Keretz has done on the environment over the years, not just here, but, you know, some of you may once or twice have heard him mention that he once served on the West Hollywood City Council, and that he served in Sacramento as well. He has always made sustainability a priority. He was one of the first and most outspoken leaders in the state and in the country on our work to transition away from coal-fired power. He was a leader in the effort to eliminate plastic pollution in our waterways by banning single-use plastic bags. He was a huge proponent of water conservation efforts as a member of the MWD. He has been an unparalleled champion of urban wildlife in LA. I'm not sure that a single week has gone by during his time on the council when he has not submitted some sort of motion about improving the environment, or making the world and the climate better. And we could be here all day if we actually went into the detail of all the stuff that's in this resolution. Suffice it to say that if there's a transition we're making to clean energy, or an effort to protect our water, or to save or improve the treatment of our wildlife, or to make LA a more sustainable place to live, Paul has had a hand in it. And there's a lot of folks who agree with me. Standing behind me and joining me today, we have folks here from the Sierra Club, yes?
Yeah.
The Los Angeles League of Conservation Voters.
Yeah.
Heal the Bay.
Climate Reality.
Climate Reality, they're all chiming in now. The Surf Rider Foundation, you can't get Enviro to follow a script, it's just all jump in. Citizens for Los Angeles Wildlife, the MWD Board, the Federation of Hillside and Canyon Associations, the LA Business Council, Los Angeles Alliance for a New Economy, and a whole bunch of, Biona Institute, happy birthday, Marsha, and a whole bunch of others. Mr. Keretz, your wife and your chief of staff and your staff have been in on this for a while, as has...
They kept a secret.
Yes, they have. But I believe Andy actually produced talking points for you. That's pretty good staffing. So, I just wanted, on behalf of environmentalists, on behalf of people who are supporting the Green New Deal, on behalf of people who are looking out for the planet, we just wanted to take a few moments right around Earth Day to say thank you to you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, I don't know what to say, this is kind of a surprise. I was trying to figure out what was going on as people were lining up, and I was like, I think I know all these people. What are they all doing that I didn't hear about? Well, I thank you, Mike, for this, this is very cool. The environment has been certainly one of my main missions in life as an elected official for 30 years or so and before. Didn't expect to get recognized for it, especially not at a significant time, so I'm announcing my retirement as of today. I think this is a high point, and it's time to go.
No.
There's a couple of people circulating petitions to get on the ballot behind you.
Well, you might have to wait three and a half years. I really appreciate this, I don't know what to say, this means a lot to me. This has been something I care so much about, keeping our planet alive, keeping our wildlife, protecting everything that's important to us. So, I thank you for the recognition for it, I look forward to working with you and all of you in the next three and a half years on making sure we do everything that we need to, to save our planet and save our species, save our wildlife, and keep LA and the rest of the world as it should be. So, thank you so much.
Congratulations, Paul.
I have to thank all the people behind me and all their different organizations for all the amazing work that they've done, and I've done and seen with them for 30 or 40 years, some of you, I hate to admit it. I also want to thank my great staff, and especially Andy Schrader, who is my environmental guru. I always say, he stands head and shoulders above the rest of the environmental movement, and not just he's, because he's the tallest person in the whole movement. I also want to thank Ali Samard, who not only does my communication stuff, but is a ferocious protector of the wildlife and our hillsides. And just thank you, everybody, this is very unexpected and a very sweet surprise. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. And Mr. Krikorian, I mean, not Mr. Krikorian, Mr. Keretz, you see the mountain lion photo? Right in front of you, turn around, I want you to look at it, see? That is just a replica of the cat that's being developed, being delivered to your house a little later.
I have to admit, I joked for years, I thought, at some point, I'm going to be hiking in the Santa Monica Mountains, and I'm going to be eaten by P-22.
Well, you're going to have your own.
And that would be the most ironic way I could go.
Yeah, Gail is taking care of the cat right now, all right. Anyways, give Paul another round of applause, he's a good man.
Thank you.
Okay, members, any, any other announcements?
Don't trip over the mountain lion.
Then let's move to adjourning motions, if all would please rise. Okay, if I could, in fact, what I'd like to just start off with, maybe Mr. Harris Dawson and Mr. Price, we can get together and do something tomorrow on Mr. Singleton.
Got it.
So, so, for the three of us, all right? Now, I'm looking to my left, are there any adjourning motions to my left? Now, I'm looking to my right, Mr. Smith's side, Mr. Krikorian's side, I don't see any. Members, this meeting's adjourned.